Okay. If there's conversation to be had, you can take the conversation to the lobby. Ralph, Mally, if there's conversation, just take it to the lobby. Thank you. So the first item is to adopt the agenda for the board meeting. The agenda's been posted and required. Is there any, are there any changes to be made to the agenda? I have one. We got the request this afternoon to consider closing a portion of Park Street Extension on Saturday, September 11th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. I think that's a plus or minus closure. Chief Rikel?
He's out.
Oh, he's excellent. Okay, so he can comment on that. So if that's, if we could consider that, maybe we could pop it in as, 7B, is that fine?
Sure.
7B, September 11th, Park Street. A request to close a portion of Park Street Extension.
Is this where I would suggest addition?
Yes.
Changing the three-way stop at Park Street to a four-way stop?
It's not, the first time that that's been raised. We can discuss it again tonight, but it's gonna be short. 7C, Park Street, High Street, Marble Street intersection. Anything else to be added to the agenda? If not, all in favor of adopting the agenda as we've just amended it by adding item 7B and 7C, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. You guys have it. Item two, approval of the previous minutes. Can take them together or separately as the board prefers. Okay, the board's moves to approve the minutes as submitted for all three meetings, June 28th, July 21st, July 26th. Mr. Wyman, second. Are there any errors or omissions in the minutes as they were submitted? None heard, all in favor of adopting the minutes as they were presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That's unanimous. You guys have it. Item three, the town manager's report, Mr. Att.
It's my town manager's report for the week of July 26th and August 2nd. Not a lot of big things, trying to put the big stuff there. Matt Alloch and Elliot on the 4th for the design review and status meeting for the wastewater treatment plant upgrades. Discussion we had on design, proposed new equipment, environmental review, and schedule. Construction is tentatively scheduled to start in the spring of 2022. Scheduled our first shade tree plant tree regulatory meeting with Joanne Garten from Antarctic Department of Forest Parks and Rex Urban and Community Forest Program. Neil Sillings will be joining us and possibly Laura Peterson on his first visit. Something to discuss with you guys at the last board that will be able to, they've got some nice technology to help us do this. I actually did find the old tree plant, so that I think would be helpful unless moving forward to this, just to sort of tack onto it. Some upcoming news, the governor's planning a visit on August 25th to hold a press conference on the 10-year anniversary of Tropical Storm Irene and to discuss all of our flood mitigation successes. So, looking forward to that. Rec department news, Brandon Farrell days were a smashing success. Big thanks to sponsors, Heritage Family Credit Union, Royal Regional Medical Center, 50 30, Smoke Rice Campground in Omia. Many thanks to our wonderful volunteers and shout out to the Brown Fire Department for providing lights for our parking lot. As to Rock Fest was held last Saturday and August 7th. Lots of good food there, too. Preseason soccer camp of the Ovi girls soccer team is bound for August 16th through 18th for only $10. Football registration is open for grades 1 through 8. And use soccer registration for grades pre-K through 6. And what are items to cover on that?
Thank you, Mr. Atherton. Questions for the town manager from the board? Questions for the town manager from the public? Questions for the town manager from the press? There's always time for public comment, so if there's not any right now, we can move on to the next agenda item, but there's public comment available each agenda item. Item four is announcements. There was a request, do you want to deal with this?
For which one, sir?
This announcement. Okay, so there was a request from, through the Town Clerks Association of Vermont to announce that there will be a memorial service to remember the victims of COVID-19. All Vermonters are invited to attend a statewide memorial service to honor Vermonters' loss to COVID-19. And it will include a reading of names. This will be Sunday, September 19th, at 3:00 p.m. on the State House lawn in Montpelier. And that came to us through our town clerk, Sue Gage. So that's just for the benefit of the community and those who might like to participate from that. Item five is general public comment and participation. Anybody have anything they'd like to discuss that doesn't appear later on the agenda?
I do.
Yeah, just folks.
I've had last couple weeks, numerous complaints about no flow of traffic. Not working too well. A lot of people have told me, it just doesn't flow. Do you have something different with lights?
Well, we looked at that midway through construction when we were seeing that cars, cars were waiting too long going up the side streets. I was watching it this weekend during long sale because we had so many people and cars in town. But that, we still have to remember that when this intersection was built, that it wasn't only just to get cars quicker through town, it was also for folks on the side streets to be getting out into Route 7 sooner than later and pedestrians. Every time that pedestrian button gets hit, it recycles the light. So you've got, you know, our own little Essex 5 corners down here basically, where you just have too many roads that are meeting at weird things. I've been watching it a lot, too, and I see that southbound traffic is definitely backing up. It does, it's only certain times of the day. I have spoken with Dave Monroe from Fuson Mill about this to see if there's something we can do. I don't know what the solution is for that. Because I think it's gonna go back, if we start timing it differently for that and the side streets are gonna go back to where they were the first time. So, someone's always gonna be waiting at some point. Do you have a suggestion about?
No, I don't. I didn't know if anybody else might have a thought or. Do you have the regulations on, like the crosswalks, 15 seconds per minute?
They are. I think they are around 15 seconds. And you know, and the thing too with the lights, like when there's no traffic, the Route 7 stays open. You know, it's only something that comes to the light on the side roads that triggers it. So when you've got your busy times of the day, you're getting more folks triggering those lights coming, you know, and setting the whole system up again. And I think it's interesting because you hear folks who don't drive down or live on Carver or Union Street really don't complain so much about it because it's so much easier for them. I don't know. I can ask them, look at it again. We have rounded up a few times that we're seeing this, but we've seen a lot of traffic on Route 7, too. And I know, you know, just from being next door here even before the lights, like there were Fridays where, when the old setup, it was hard to get up of West Seminary on busy times, so.
So could I, I live on Carver Street, just serving notes. And it's, it is interesting to think, because I'm quite pleased with the ability to get onto Route 7 from Carver. It's like I know every time I pull up there, the sensor sees me and I just wait my turn and boom, I get out. But if the cycles were longer for the Route 7 part, I think that would be a rational choice because I would be willing to wait longer if I knew my turn was coming up, you know? And that would increase the throughput for the 7 South-North part. And I was like, you made those parts.
So when 7 comes back on after, I see this in my head, it's sad. When that, when that cycle comes on and it goes from Carver and then, you know, Union, and then Route 7 goes back on, the northbound may open first because it has the left turn lane.
Yep.
So that's, you know, that side's staying open longer, which makes sense because it clears out quicker. You know, meanwhile, these folks are waiting for the left turn people to turn. So that's, that's where, that's where the difference is. I don't, no. It's gonna be tricky to do it. I'll see if we can tweak it a bit, but I don't know if there's a great solution to it. I don't know. I guess, you know, driving every day, our waits, we're, there's still not waits like Middlebury and Rowland on Route 7, so.
Bill Mark?
Bill Mark, Carver Street resident. I have to say, I agree with Tim, except for I don't think we should change it. I do like getting off Carver Street as quickly as do as well as coming off of Union Street as well when I go to Hannaford. It's the same kind of a wait. I think back to the days before the intersection got redone. How often would, how long would it take to get off, especially around busy times between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. when everyone's commuting or 8:00 a.m. in the morning when people are commuting to work? I think if we were to compare our track issues to other places along Route 7, I think we'd find that our wait times are not that long. I feel that people are maybe still getting used to the idea of having a light in town. But again, go to Middlebury at 8:00 in the morning or at 5:00 at night and see how long it takes you to get from south end of town to the north end of town. It's considerably longer than it is in Brandon, even on our busiest Saturdays.
The longest time in Middlebury is when the schools get out there.
Right.
And that's the toughest stretch there on Forest Street. Was there public comment from the chief?
Yes, just kind of coinciding with what Bill said. I think that initially when the traffic lights first started, we got tons of complaints from people on Carver Street and on Union Street, especially coming out of Hannafords and Walgreens that they couldn't get onto Route 7. And the timing was changed to affect that. And so typically when you pull up the light, you're sitting there for a very short period of time. And as Dave and both Tim said, that the northbound traffic goes a lot quicker than the southbound traffic. Now, I sat the other day on Route 7 coming south by the veterinarian's office, and I could see the traffic backed up and I knew it's just a matter of, it was that time of day when it was the farmer's market, you had people hitting the pedestrian signs. You know, I get it, it's a little bit longer waiting on this light. Numbers are extremely good with patience, but for the amount of time that that happens and how often, it's really such a short rate of time to have when everything else is moving so, so, so well, actually, for that reason. I think changing those times would be problematic.
It's better than the year-round hopper weeks to have at the bank corner.
And I, just because I haven't paid attention to it, coming on Park Street, is there a sign that says "right on red"?
No, but it says, it doesn't say "no right on red," so that means you can turn.
Right, well, that's what I thought. I mean, like coming on a Carver, it's basically nice if you can go right on red, but you can't on a Union because there's a sign in it.
You can't on a Union because you have.
Right, I had that, but what I'm saying is, I'm wondering, because a lot of times somebody will come to that Park Street and they'll stop and there'll be absolutely nothing coming. And that triggers a light. Is there, would it be feasible to put a "right on red" sign at Park Street, at the end of Park Street?
Yes, we could.
I, because, I mean, you're just, it's funny, I can see a lot of people just sit there. There's not a, there's nothing coming, absolutely not. And then it triggers a, then it triggers a light. I'm just wondering if those.
Actually, Tracy, it shouldn't trigger the light in that lane. It should only be triggering it in the lane that turns southbound. It shouldn't even be picking it up on the other side.
It seems, it seems to trigger. I don't know if that's.
If someone waits long enough, it triggers.
That's what I'm saying. I've seen them, you know, I've sat there and I was like, "What are you waiting for?" And all of a sudden the light will change and.
They were waiting for the light.
They were waiting for the light. So I, that was the only thing I could think of.
They didn't pay attention to that in driver's ed class, did they?
That's really, that's really why.
We can do well. Well, holding a Driving and Brandon crash course.
What's that?
I don't think there's a lot that we can do outside of holding a How to Drive a Brandon course.
Right.
I don't think anybody wants to take that task.
Rec department can put that out.
I'm sure.
You can tie it to signs while people are waiting, you know, informational signs.
Then it'll get distracted drivers.
Further public comment about the lights, traffic lights. Thank you for all of the input. That was all valuable input. I appreciate that. So Dave's gonna give it some more thought, but we recognize that there's some limitations and we also recognize that even if you don't live on Carver or Union Street, many of us do shop on Union Street and have friends on Carver Street. And it is, I do find it much safer trying to regain access to Route 7 from beautiful spaces. Further public comment items you don't see on the agenda tonight. Mike?
Before Section 6, there used to be a geographical marker in the park that told the longitude, latitude, and elevation of Brandon.
You have brought that to our attention previously. And Dave was gonna ask Alderson Elliott or somebody.
I don't really know a thing about it. And I've asked them and they said that that was put there after Tropical Storm Irene for, you know, purposes for something, so.
That wasn't after Irene?
It was during Section 6 that it was pulled up during the construction. Because Bob Thomas went down and raised hell with Sue Gage about it. They went up there and said, "It's not supposed to be moved. It's a penalty." Stuff like that, but under the circumstances, being construction, I could see it being moved.
Would you mind that?
I would look back.
You can ask Geological Service. They'll be happy to hear from us. Tell them we want to make sure that their monuments are correctly positioned. They'll be delighted. Second question.
There was also a zero marker. It was just left at the Congregational Church between the curve and the side about the 476. And this view, zero marker was the mileage between Brandon and Ruben Staggered at that point. Every town has one somewhere. And I don't know if we can get another one of those put back in.
Sure. This is the experienced voice of a sailor in the United States Navy looking for adequate navigation aids. I hope they get to the notes. Was there further, was there a hand in the back for some more public comment? Okay, we'll move along. You can always come back. Item six, BLSG resolution discussion. I see there's some official select board action required here to make something happen. Could we ask our BLSG representatives to introduce it to us?
Okay, I believe you have the agreement to create the district and you have the proposed amendments that we'd like to make to that agreement. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to read it over. I don't know if you want to discuss the whole thing tonight. What we're looking for is, we're looking for feedback from the board with suggestions of what they might like to see in there. You could forward it to the board. Doesn't mean that it's gonna get put in there. It's gonna be up to the board to take everybody's suggestions and figure out which is the best solution to any particular question. So I don't know how you want to proceed with this. I'm assuming that if you make any suggestions tonight, they will all be in the minutes, so we can always get a copy of the minutes and, and take your suggestions from the minutes.
So the meeting that you're talking about is gonna be August 19th?
Yes, but that, that date is not set in stone
Okay.
for us to agree to this.
So I was interested in the third paragraph on the resolution that says that two-thirds of the legislative bodies of the member municipalities must approve any amendments within six months of the approval of the Board of Trustees. So what will happen first is the BLSG board will meet, and you're asking for input ahead of that meeting. And then they're gonna propose changes, which then two-thirds of the select boards will have to sign off on. Is that correct? Understand?
That's my understanding.
Okay. So this is, it sounds like this is BLSG looking for some public input regarding some proposed changes. Some of them are, I would call clerical, you know? It's catching up words, wording, changing vice chairman and stuff to just chair, things like that. Others are more significant, changing the name of the district from, I didn't realize the word "first" was part of it, but first, it raises in Lester, Salisbury Ocean, Pittsford, changing that to the Otter Creek Watershed District. And then there's some other ones changing equally to equitably and changing some times from six months to two and some stuff about towns with drawings. So there's some substantive changes as well as some style changes, I guess I would say. And this is, this is the draft that the BLSG board has proposed. But they're looking for some more input. So is there board input or public input regarding any of these stylistic or substantive changes?
We're looking for board input.
Board input. Okay.
Only because otherwise this is gonna get.
All right, you're looking for board input, but this board's policy is to entertain public input and consider it before the board makes a statement. So.
Can I ask a question?
No. Yes.
How does, how does two-thirds of a legislative body vote work when we don't vote that way?
No, they're looking for an affirmative vote of two-thirds of the legis, of the select boards.
Of the select boards as a whole in the district.
Right. That's how I'm reading that. So you have six towns, you need four boards to say okay.
Five towns.
You have five towns. You still need four boards to say okay. Can I ask a question? Yeah. I wonder if you could explain the, the idea that made you want to change the wording "equally" to "equitably"? Because I get the feeling there was probably a substantive reason why that, that change might happen.
Well, because if you look at our budget right now, it's not equally, it's equitably. Every town doesn't pay the same amount. So we wanted to try to clarify that a little bit better. And if you know the problem that we're in this year, it's been taken that you can pay what you want.
And so are you suggesting that equitable, I mean, how are you going to come up with an equitable?
Well, we have a formula that we use.
And how will that be different than what it is now that is based on equal?
Not based on equal now, but hasn't been for.
So it's always been based on equitable. You're just trying to bring that.
Right, we're trying to clean this up.
I see. Can I follow up with a question? So I see the resolution and I see something that at the top, it says "bylaws of the BLSG in Sec. Control District." I don't see what I think the resolution refers to, which is agreement.
Where are you getting the bylaws from?
So the documents that we got, the one page is this resolution that talks about August 19th for the fourth meeting.
Right.
But then it makes reference to certain paragraphs and I was having a hard time like finding your paragraph. So the other document that we got is called "Bylaws of the First Brandon."
Don't even look at that.
I don't look at that. So I think we're missing, though, the document that this resolution.
You evidently do not have the agreement to create the district.
Right.
Which is.
So that.
A document like this. This is from 1979.
So I think before the board weighed in, we need to at least see it.
Yep.
Number 2013 bylaws. But that's not what the resolution's talking about.
That's not what we're, we're trying to tighten up the agreement to create the district.
Yeah, as Seth said, I was looking to match the paragraphs you were referencing. So I had to look at them in the agreement and I couldn't find them.
That's why.
I'm pretty sure this is what you gave me, Wayne. I didn't have any of this.
I didn't give to you.
Where would I have gotten it?
I don't know. At the one meeting, you said you had everything.
No, I have this. This is what I have.
Okay, well, then there was a misunderstanding between Dave and I. And we will have to come back, I guess at the next meeting. We will make sure that you get the agreement to create the district and then you can compare that with the resolution.
So our next meeting is 23rd theoretically, and the BLSG's gonna meet the 19th. So if we're able to have distributed to the board the agreement in advance of that, are you looking for like individual board members to lob suggestions or comments? Or are you looking for like the board to act together?
Well, if you were, if you had all the information tonight,
Yeah.
I would ask that you all work together on it.
Yeah.
But if that's not possible, then, you know, at least if we get information from a board member, I mean, only one of the five of you might have information that you want to pass along, so. Either, any one of you on the board can get in touch with either Rich or myself and we'll pass it on to our board.
Sounds good. I apologize that we don't have the same document.
No, it's just.
Because we could have acted tonight, like that would have made sense.
Not a problem.
Anything else we should know or you want us to know?
Nope. There are a lot of mosquitoes out there or trying our best.
While you're here, I wonder if I could, well, no, I'll, I'll contact the wife, thank you. I can, I don't need to. Okay. Any public comment on the matter? Okay. Item seven, ARPA funds discussion, part three. So last time we considered 17 projects that were suggested. We eliminated a few of them as being not eligible. And then we decided to study the others some more. And we're kind of at the point where we have, I see in the packet, there was, there's a two-page further information from the Energy Committee with a revision to their proposal about Brandon's solar installation. So before we even dive into that, my question is to the town manager. Do we have any info from BLCT or the State of Vermont regarding when the county allocations are gonna be disclosed to the towns?
No, but we did receive our first payment today.
How much?
$190 something, about.
So that was half of the first, half of the $390,000. And so that's actually sitting in a bank account ready for us to spend.
It's sitting in a bank account.
So, so in the minutes of the previous meeting, there was like a little chart where we talked about everything and that was just kind of a basis for discussion. I, I'm not wanting to upset anybody at all. I do tend to have the feeling that we can keep gathering information and collecting it, but I'm very hesitant to commit a decision until we actually know the full extent of this fund. So the normal position that the town is in is that we would get a bunch of suggestions and not have enough money to do everything. So we might choose something and then maybe find out that we came up short and we still didn't have enough money to do what we chose. I think what we're in right now, while we know we have $390,000 that's been told that's coming our way and the first half of it has arrived. We also know in a semi-official way from our congressional delegation through the press that the county allotments are now going in Vermont to be given the waiver to be distributed to the towns, but we don't know the amount of that. So I am a little bit loathe to eliminate projects or designate a project when in fact we might be talking about being able to do a bigger project or more projects side by side. So I just wanted to kind of have that out there. I don't want to run into a decision tonight if we can help. I see Jack Schneider from the Energy Committee.
Oh, Matthew Orchard is here for that one.
Matthew Orchard, I was wondering who was behind the chief. I saw a shirt and I could not figure out who was behind the chief. So because the Energy Committee has submitted the revision to their suggestion that Jim Emerson brought us last time, would Mr. Orchard like to talk about the revision and what the revision proposes? If you still feel that's appropriate? Oh, yeah, yeah. I think the more information we can get, the earlier we can get, the better we'll all be. I just am letting you know, don't go away sad if I'm not really gonna say yes to. No, that's okay.
So hi, my name's Matthew Orchard. I'm a member of the Brandon Energy Committee and a resident of the town. I would like to present a small amendment to the proposal for the Brandon solar installation presented to you by Jim Emerson on July 26th that would take advantage of the full amount of funding potentially available to Brandon through the ARPA local relief funding. relief funding. Uh, so just to refresh, as you may remember, Jim's original proposal for a solar installation would cost the town approximately three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, providing a hundred and fifty kilowatts of energy, generating savings of thirty-four thousand dollars in electric bills per year, which translates to a one-point-five annual tax savings for every Brandon resident. After some further discussion with the owners of Saint-San from Vermont, we learned that a one-million-dollar project could build us a five-hundred-kilowatt solar installation, generating a savings of a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in electric bills per year, which translates to about a four-point-four percent tax savings for every Brandon resident. So this amendment would increase annual savings from one-point-five to four-point-four percent per resident. So those are just the basic numbers, but I just wanted to expand on why the town should consider such a large and costly installation. So our expanded energy needs, a one-million-dollar solar installation would actually produce more energy than currently needed by our town. Uh, however, given the state's energy goals, there will be a gradual and significant increase in the need for sustainably sourced energy by our town residents in the future with adoption of more electric technologies to replace fossil fuel usage. Just days ago, an executive order was signed aimed at making half of all new vehicles sold in twenty-thirty electric, a move made by backing from some of the S Q S automakers. We are very likely to see a large increase in EV cars, bikes, and service vehicles driving our streets and recharge themselves within town. The population's transition to electric technologies will not end on the roadways, however. We should expect an increased demand on our electrical grid and energy needs for other emerging technologies such as heat pumps, air conditioners, smart home technologies, and the electrification of all household tools and machines such as lawnmowers, brushcutters, and chainsaws. With those increased energy demands, we should certainly expect an increase in price for non-renewable energy sources, making a shift to local and renewable power production an even greater incentive. So the final financial incentive, the Brandon solar installation project would benefit all members of Brandon. The savings created could help our town avoid an increase in taxes on community members for years to come, or it could represent an economic opportunity to reinvest those savings on other projects that would benefit our town and long-term community prosperity. Uh, we have an environmental responsibility. It would be remiss of me to complete this proposal without observing that our global temperatures are rising. How one interprets the impact of a changing climate will vary from person to person. However, I would suggest that it would be short-sighted for anyone to not consider that a changing climate will result in a changing societal landscape. It has been predicted that climate change will lead to a large migration of populations from coastal cities and areas to further inland. Our agricultural systems will need to adjust, our technology sectors will have to innovate, and all of this change will not come cheaply or without the need of sustainably sourced energy to provide the solutions to our challenging future. I believe it is possible for humanity to continue to thrive in the uncertain world of tomorrow, but to do so, we must act now, we must act creatively, quickly, in a way that leaves no member of our community behind. I believe the proposal would signify a great step forward for local energy resilience. It would show our preparedness to take on the challenges of climate change while also be financially responsible and a boost to our town's savings. Furthermore, I'd like to point out to the select board that should this project never take in by the town, that the Brandon Energy Committee and its members would happily provide their support, time, and resources to help the town manager and others in moving the project forward effectively and efficiently. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
That's all.
Questions and comments from the board about, um, the energy committee's revision of the proposal, um, which was made in light of the, of the projected regional funding?
Hard question, Mr. Chairman. Yes, just where the proposal must get built?
Has the location changed based on the scope of the project we're talking about now?
Uh, I believe we think that the, the increased size project would still be feasible in the original location that we suggested. Um, I think that's, is that not described in the document that Jim Emerson perhaps sent him in?
One of the points that Jim spoke to me about was the state-owned land in between the, um, training school and the, um, current, uh, uh, solar power, um, where our current solar panels are, cause it's like a hundred acres in there. And, um, and that some of that could actually be, um, for solar, increased solar. It's, it's, it's right near the industrial park, so it's, it's got great access to, you know, power line and that kind of stuff.
So he talked to the state about it?
Jim has been, um, been exploring, uh, that, that land partly because of SolarFest, because SolarFest was looking for some land and, um, and it seems to, that hundred acres seems to have a lot of potential for both SolarFest needs and for, um, possible so future solar, uh, array.
So would they, so we don't know what the, if they're threatening to ever station like if they want to sell it or...
He's talked to Butch Shaw and what, what Butch Shaw said, which was fascinating to me, is that it's really hard to get the state to sell land because when they do, they have to do it at market value and the whole, apparently the whole legislature has to vote on it, where it's much easier to do a ninety-nine-year lease. And so Butch is suggesting that we explore the possibility of leasing these hundred acres for, you know, a, a long period of time for like a dollar or something.
How far is it from the three phases that's on Robert Woodruff?
Yeah, I, I can't speak to the, the details exactly, but I, I, I think, um, I, I know Jim's kind of crunching through, um, exploring this idea.
What else do we have to watch on, on the overall unit?
Nothing we can build on, we've got a lot of, you know, FEMA locks we've purchased, but...
No, but any industrial project?
Well, they're not ours technically, I mean, they're still the Brandon Industrial Corporation, so...
Yeah, but I mean, how many is there?
There's two left, there's two left that can be built on.
I, I think the only thing I would observe, which you heard, which is just fascinating to me, is just this idea that it's, um, taking, you know, ARPA money, which is, is not our tax dollar specifically, uh, but, and, and creating a cash flow for the town, which could fund lots of future, um, creative things that we need, whether it's a, a new barn for equipment or, um, or, or water projects, or, I mean, it, it, it's, it's almost like creating a money tree, cause that's what solar power does, is it, it creates power. So it's just...
I, I want to speak just a little freely here, so I totally understand this, like, I'm, I'm glad that we're able to do our solar array what we did and obviously, you know, we've seen the benefits from it and what it's done to our utility bills since we did. Um, and that it's, you know, it, it meets our town plan, but nobody knows where it is until you kind of fall on top of it.
Yeah.
I'm worried, just looking at the numbers of, you know, where this is, this sounds really great for the first year to me and only, I mean, what is it, budget season number ten, I think for me, one that's, you know, says will translate into four point, four point, four percent reduction in taxes over the next forty years. How do we do that? Well, I understand that you guys, I understand they come up with like, yes, it would be this reduction, but everybody knows when we go into budget season, that's not how it really happens. You know, like, I feel like we're selling, we'd be selling, someone sort of probed truth and then we say, well, yeah, we really have this reduction in taxes, but we're gonna be throwing all this cash, like, we stuffing this cash somewhere so we can build things and whatever. I, that's a tough sell.
Transparency is certainly important and, and whether we do it as a, 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 a direct benefit to the taxpayer by lowering your taxes, which I would not promote as a board member, the same way that when we, um, you know, sit at, at budget season, you know, we try to make things predictable and even, and, and so I, I think transparency is important and so, so not heralding this as the four percent savings on your taxes. But, um, I, it, it's an easy thing to explain that it would be of value over the next forty years, it would be keep giving us value.
I, I've been thinking a lot about when this came up the first time and like, you know, how I was really, really just wanted to do this Shining Street project and the more I've thought about that, I've kind of learned away from what they would, that the sidewalk grant, you know, it's gonna be two years before re, re-trans tells us we can actually build a thing. Um, but looking at our town garage again and thinking, I was down there the other day talking to Sean and, um, we could, we could do some really cool savings down there with, you know, building a different structure and maybe turning that into a lot of solar to power the garage, I think, would be a pretty neat project down there. But that's just, I don't know, just thinking about how we could kind of incorporate all of this into one thing. Um, where do you own that land?
Mm-hmm.
You know, we, we know there's a need for a new, a new building down there, we've known that for a while.
What we got for acres down here, you know?
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to look tracey.
How tall do you have that?
No, maybe I'm right, preferably.
No, it would just take it higher and less, right?
You know, look at the pat heels. But I think that, I, I would really like to see us do something with that area too that, I mean, you know, you, you've been down there enough and we've been doing all these little things to tighten it up and save money, which has worked. And I could really see that being a, 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 you know, a benefit to the town by doing it right there on that site to kind of all in one, new garage, some solar, make it, you know, a hundred percent efficient.
I, I think, um, in relation to how I led off the discussion, I don't think it necessarily might even have to be an either-or scenario with this new, um, with this new allotment coming our way, but we just don't know exactly how much it is.
Right.
I wonder if tonight, um, if there are additional items on the proposal list that we could stop considering, like would that be useful as wino-...
In addition, I know Jack...
Or do others have more stuff?
Yeah, Jack, uh, did some, by request of the board, uh, brought together some information on the affordable housing.
Oh, great.
Um, which was on our grid over there.
It was on the consider, yeah. Jack, is that something you're ready to share tonight?
Yep.
Yes, thanks.
Was that in the board packet?
It was not. I think the only thing that came in the board packet was the, um, Jim Emerson.
It was the inside of the day last week.
He sent it to all of us last week.
That's true, so we got it early, but it's not in our packet.
Okay. So Jack's been, I'm also on the energy committee and, uh, thanks for entertaining the, the proposal to use some of the ARPA money for four acres. Uh, like many towns in Vermont, you know, Brandon has a lot of older energy inefficient housing. And after mortgages and, um, you know, taxes, you know, quite often, energy costs are the next highest expensive affairs. Uh, more than a third of the households in Vermont actually pay thirty percent or more of their income to go towards housing. Not terribly affordable, sixteen percent of them actually pay more than half. So the goal here would be to use some of this money, you know, put the, uh, ARPA funds, use it as seed money, create a, uh, a Brandon Housing Committee or Council that would manage the funds through the revolving loan fund. Um, if we were to renovate houses and make them much more energy efficient, according to, uh, Naval Works of Western Vermont, the average savings would be about nine hundred dollars a year, which is fairly substantial. Uh, not only does it, uh, save money, but it also makes a, you know, a safer, cleaner environment for the household. Uh, when we put together the energy plan for the town plan, as the energy committee, we had a lot of input from the Ruppman Regional Plan Commission and they told us that eighty-one percent of the households in town are currently heated with, uh, fossil fuels and that's primarily heating oil, but also there's a lot of propane here. And if you were to take a look at the chart here, you can see that the goal over the next thirty years is to really reduce the emphasis on fossil fuels and replace them with more energy-efficient electrical, um, powered devices like heat pumps and, uh, heat pump pot water systems. Certainly weatherization will be a large part. So the proposal would be to create this Brandon Housing Coalition. They would manage money through the, uh, revolving loan fund, uh, which, I took a look at the, uh, the rules around the revolving loan fund and it says that, uh, loans are permitted for residential infrastructure improvements for low-income residents. I also used Seth's, uh, matrix and tried to match it up so that with the criteria that we're looking for for the ARPA money. And according to that, the ARPA guidelines permit funding of affordable housing as qualifying under climate change and resilience. So the guidelines indicate ARPA would encourage funding, which we could use to increase affordable housing. And we would do that through the purchase and retrofitting of abandoned and severely deteriorating houses. I mean, if you drive around town, maybe you go down Marvel or Maple or Nickerson, you know, some of these roads, there's always that one house that doesn't look like anybody's lived in for quite a while. So I don't know if they've been abandoned or what situation. We'd have to create a list of housing inventory. We'd create a rating system, kind of an unbiased rating system. And certainly houses that would be able to be restored and these houses might just have to come down. Um, there are other houses that are still owner occupied or renter occupied, that really are not in very good shape and they could be renovated. And funds would be used from the revolving loan fund, uh, to make these changes. We'd work with, uh, local approved by efficiency, um, Vermont, um, approved vendors to do the restoration. Uh, we've already talked to a number of other parts of the state where they've actually been very successful, these programs have, uh, approved them in the southeastern part of the state for vital communities. They actually build a lot of, um, new affordable housing from scratch. I think what we'd wanna do here is just renovate our existing stuff. So I think the first step was beyond creating a committee that would run this, would be to create an inventory of those houses that we think would be good candidates for the program and then do the research on what the actual situation is. Have they been abandoned? I mean, I wouldn't necessarily know that. Are they paying taxes, things like that? Are they just not occupied? Or are they, uh, have they still occupied, but they're in really bad shape and we should work with them to upgrade their systems? So I think this would help us, uh, kill two birds with one stone. We'd have more affordable housing. You know, if we did, uh, renovate a house that had been abandoned and then, uh, we could put it on the market, we could take the money that it sold for and put it back into the revolving loan fund. And in that way, we'd use the ARPA money as seed money, but then we have a continuing ongoing program where we could, you know, just gradually bring all the houses in town up to a much more efficient and livable standard. So I think that's, uh, kind of what the proposal is. You know, you don't have to make a decision.
Jack, thank you for that. Thank you for the discussion of it that we got in advance. Um, so is it, would it be fair to say that, you know, we, we wrote on the, uh, on the list, you know, increase the supply of affordable housing? So would it be fair to say that we need to reorient what we might think of as being affordable housing? Like, um, you're not suggesting that the town become landlords. In other words, I'm building a multi-unit apartment complex, um, that's income-sensitive. Is that correct?
This would be all existing, uh, housing.
And, um, in terms of the amount or the por, the proportion that would kind of go directly to existing homeowners, um, to do energy efficiency retrofits so that they could have a more affordable place to live? Cause I, I believe energy poverty is a real thing in Vermont and, you know, I have experienced it. Um, so there would be some portion in what you're suggesting that would go directly into a loan to a homeowner. Um, and then I, what's the balance of, um, or what's the other portion that would go toward, you know, purchasing a distressed property and rehabilitating and selling it? Has that been thought of?
Having gotten too far into that, just wanted to see if the proposal would be of interest to the board. Um, I think that there, you know, for housing that we want to upgrade that's currently owner occupied, there would be an income tax. Low-income residents would qualify for loans from the Brandon Revolving Loan Fund. Uh, others, we would steer towards programs like efficiency grants, where they also have good low, you know, plus loans for the higher-end folks. Uh, we haven't really started talking to the Bennington-Ruppman, uh, opportunities publishing, but they actually do... We haven't really started talking to the Bennington-Ruppman Opportunities Corporation, but they actually do free upgrades. And they totally fund an upgrade to weatherize a house for a longer time. They say that their average cost for renovating a house that's not in terrible shape is about $9,500, which is total weatherization plus upgraded appliances. I think we'd have to figure out, you know, whether we want to renovate the really abandoned sort of houses or spend more money on, you know, retrofitting ones that are currently occupied.
So that could be something that either the board could set up in advance when it sets up the committee, or the committee itself could kind of make a proposal, you know, once it was the other.
Yeah.
Dave?
So you're, just so I get this straight, Jack, you're proposing that these abandoned and non-unoccupied homes that the town actually purchased?
Well, if they're not paying their taxes and all that.
Well, that would, we would, I'm not trying to be difficult here, I'm just trying to put the pieces together because we have processes for all of these. And as we all know, acquiring property for a town, we have to go through lots of public hearings. Well, not lots, we have to go through a public hearing process in order for us to acquire property like we did when we purchased the land behind the mobile station. If they're not paying their taxes, we've been, you know, the only year we haven't done tax sales since I've been here was last year because of COVID. So, you know, that's one way that we acquire properties is through the tax sale process if they're not abandoned. But I think, you know, if we're going to start acquiring, I just want to let you know that, that, you know, that's what's, that's the way we have to do it now. If we don't do it with tax sale, and if someone wants to sell their property to us, we do have to go through like a formal process where the town actually go on that for us to purchase it.
So if we know the owner of the property and they're willing to sell it to the town, it still has to go through that process?
It's, it's, it's not this board, it's the town meeting.
Okay.
So, ARPA allows the towns to designate agencies or recipient, partner agencies. So is one way to keep in the spirit and letter of ARPA would be to form the Brandon Housing Committee or Coalition or whatever, and then grant to it, and then that as its own entity could do, they could act more freely than the town could act.
So it would have to not be under the town's umbrella at that point?
Right. That's, I, from what I read, that was like very allowed, and there's examples.
Yeah, I think it's creative. And, I mean, you know, I purchased two properties and did basically this same model, where they were distressed properties and I renovated them. And they're so energy efficient that they're affordable to live in now, with the mortgage less than rent for those, those houses. And this is what, what I think he's proposing as well. And what I like about the proposal is kind of like the solar power, where once you put money in, it keeps generating benefit for us. In other words, it's not something that we just buy and we spend and we get our thing. That ability to churn future, future improvements.
Other comment or public comment?
One of the things I did in my previous life was train weatherization employees. And what a lot of places have done is use the weatherization programs as bootstrap programs to train pretty unemployable adults to be, to have trades and become wage earners. So that would be a way to, I think, talk the last meeting about crossover between line items. We could increase the number of training workers in Brandon. Hopefully, the market would stay, I mean, I don't think that this is like a five-year plan, I think it's more like a 20-year plan. You know, to keep weatherization efforts and acquisition and development going for a while. So I think we're creating a market for Brandon residents who are currently unable to work for whatever reason. And a lot of the training was not technical training, it was reading, writing, and how do you talk to somebody?
Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, the, interestingly enough, you can talk about weatherization. They just received an email today from Vermont Adult Learning where they're putting together a program, starts September 13th, a three-week course, they provide meals in the three-week courses, invite a stipend for, for, for trainings to do exactly that, weatherization training. So, I mean, like this is happening already. And it sort of points, I guess, back to this, you know, what Seth was talking about, just overhearing this, and like, it sounds like they established one of a nonprofit that's Brandon-centric, that's connecting people with some of these other resources, like connecting with Brock or connecting with the revolving loan fund to do, to help with that stuff. And plus, you'd be eligible to get other grant opportunities outside of municipal grants. I mean, I was just looking when you were talking about the, the folks down in southeastern Vermont, and, you know, they're all separate nonprofit with a $1.3 million budget, annual budget like that. You know, but again, leveraging these opportunities. I mean, like, I know that Dave talked incessantly last year about the fact that not enough people were accessing the, you know, the programs helped pay for back taxes, back sewer, back water. You know, the, you know, so again, like that, those kinds of efforts, I think are, you know, awesome and neat to be, I mean, there's programs out there for all these things. Make sure the Brandon residents have access to that is, this is huge.
That's interesting, because I just, I was thinking something else, but you're going to like, you know, talk like, and I think I brought this up a while back. I remember when we had, I think it was called PACE, that came to our town meeting. To do the weatherization thing, and it was, it was like free. I think it was free too, like, folks just needed to get a hold of them. And they came to us, what, two or three years later and said, "Yeah, we're not doing this anymore, we're going to get a single call from anybody." And, you know, it was, I mean, that was a long discussion on our town meeting that year, if I remember too. So, you know, we have a lot of these programs, and it just seems like, yeah, people just aren't either aware or just, I don't know if they're afraid to take advantage of it.
Well, hopefully, with the growing urgency of, with, you know, climate issues and wildfires and all these, it's heightening people's awareness of the need to save energy.
I think when people are struggling with energy poverty and issues of that nature, that climate awareness is far away from their daily lived existence. Yep?
I think maybe the whole country is in a phase of, we have a lot of people who became homeless due to COVID. And subsidies are disappearing, so we're going to have a lot of people looking for housing. And it might be possible to bootstrap this into building housing for people who don't have any housing, no place to live, captain of the hotels. And again, multiply the benefits. So we've got, I don't know, I think four or five different beneficiaries so far for this that I can think of.
I do know that we have throughout town, we have quite a few places where folks can, like, through the Ruppman Housing Trust, I know that Barlow have one, has, I think still to this day has a sign out that they have vacancies. And I know the former director was to say to me, because we talked about them possibly taking over another thing in town, that they said, "Well, we can't even pull up what we have." So I know there's another vacancies throughout town for housing for folks right now. Just throwing that out there too, that there are some options already available.
Further comment, further discussion? So we've got, what's left on the list is, as we started tonight, what's left on the list is grants to property owners for energy efficiency work, that kind of actually becomes part of what Jack was talking about. Loans to property owners for energy efficiency work, same thing. Capitalize the revolving loan fund for the economic development of the town. Again, Jack's talking about using the existing revolving loan fund in a way that we haven't lately been using it. You know, we've basically been using it for business development, but economic development includes the development of healthy households. And increase the supply of affordable housing, we've just heard some more, those all kind of have tied it together. Union Street Water and wastewater, that's something that Dave has got the sidewalk part together already for that proposed stretch. And are you kind of actively working on like a scope?
So just to give you a quick update on that, I had to submit to be transferred to the SPM on this project, which like.
On the sidewalk?
On the sidewalk, so they gave it to me, but I don't, I had to do that before I could get, I'm trying to use one of the engineer teams that's already pre-approved with the state. And the one thing is one of them, so I'm trying to go through the steps for that so we can get to a design. And we can use that sidewalk design to start our, rest of our sort of complete street design.
So that sounds like in a similar way to the way Park Street was approached? That there will be a number of different funding sources and there will be a mosaic assembled to complete the whole project?
It would be, yeah, it would be our path grant for sidewalks and then whatever we'd use for, out of our bus. Well, I don't know, that's where we want to figure out what the cost is. I mean, we're only talking 700 feet, so it might not be the end of the world for, we might be able to do it quite a bit with this funding.
Okay. The next one that was still on the list, townwide Wi-Fi?
Yeah, I was asked to look into that some, and to tell you the truth, I called up Bill's consultant person that he's been working with, and, and kind of got dissuaded from this idea that Wi-Fi is the direction we should be going. I still, I still believe that we owe people in our community high-speed Wi-Fi. And I guess I'm hoping that this, the communication district that we're now recently formed this last year will, will dig in on a more comprehensive way and install some of this.
And Bill's just left the room, but him and I have been trying to set up meetings with some of our current telecommunications people right now because there's expansion possibilities with a few of them, so I don't know a lot about it yet. And we're, I'd like to have a meeting with them so we could hopefully make, you know.
I hope we can be urgent on this, because my feeling is that having lived in Vermont for 25 years now, that the, we've been promising internet to people for a long time. And I think we have to be as urgent as we can in trying to actually bring some of this to the table.
But are you talking about existing utilities expanding their own capabilities?
Correct. I think we're, nah, I would not say that, okay.
Yeah. So, comment noted. Do you want to keep this?
Do I have a note?
Okay, so it's fine if you.
Unless somebody else wants to promote it on the board, I would suggest that we have other great ideas to spend this money.
We have some other ideas, and we also have an idea that there might be Wi-Fi development or internet access development coming from providers that are currently served.
And there's, you know, going to be another pop just for this broadband expansion as well, money that is separate from ARPA, which we've mentioned a few times, and I know which is definitely brought it up too, so.
So we have consensus to stop considering that project number 11, okay? So then we have number 13 was to purchase electric police cruisers or other town vehicles. I would like to, is there further information on this?
No.
I would like to say that I'm very excited about the ideas that have talked about really wide and really long-term in time. And I feel like this would be almost what we just talked about as being kind of like, let's buy something interesting. And we'll get some benefit from it, but I don't think it will last as long as, you know, the generational thing we're talking about with affordable housing and solar.
We already kept this in our budget, and I made the argument, and I think I'm winning people over to understand that an electric car, police car costs almost exactly what a gas police car costs. And so I think when it comes time to get another police vehicle, it will be a rational time to talk electric without needing ARPA money. So I'm not sure if it fits under the rubric of ARPA serving everybody's needs. We're already going to have money for electric police cars, that's what we want.
So it's not necessarily saying that we don't want to consider it, or it's not something that's still on our list of improvements for the services we provide. It's just saying that it's something that the annual year-to-year budget already can contemplate.
Right.
So that, maybe take it out of the ARPA discussion, I've been pointing it out, take out this number 13. The additional town solar array, we just heard the revised comments on that. And then replace the town highway garage, we haven't really heard too much more in terms of detail about.
Dave, have you developed those numbers at all, or kind of an idea of what you'd like to see for size and extent?
So Sean and I met today, we just came back from vacation. So we walked around this morning looking at, you know, word and wood things and stuff. And he's, I said, "Well, let's see what the conversation turns into tonight, and then we'll see if we should proceed with getting some cost estimates for, you know, buildings and stuff." He wanted to measure things out, so we're looking, one of the big things is depth within the building, so we don't have to take clouds off and bring vehicles in and order. So we can certainly continue that and see where we're at. Does that work?
Yeah.
It works, should we go for acreage and room for expansion?
Not a lot, we're pushing things around. We're going to need a new salt shed at some point here, that one's pretty much falling in the ground. And we're, we're kind of stuck by, we're pretty tight on the east side where the backs of buildings are, it's pretty much almost on the property line. We have the railroad to the south of us, wetlands to the west of us, so.
Pretty much what's, what's just, is what we've got.
We're going to lease 700 acres of industrial fire.
I mean, and the other thing is, is that going to be, when I say area-wise, is that going to, for future expansion on the town garage? Or would we be better off to say, well, maybe we ought to look at the industrial park 12 something?
We, remember, we would have to purchase the industrial fire, because town doesn't own that. No, I think we have room down there. We, you know, we were talking, Tim was down, Tim Kingston was down there today too, and we were talking about, because, you know, that's its own center there, about running up and, you know, maybe putting a little pump station at the highway garage so we could use the town sewer too. So there's some possibilities there, things that we could do, I think. And, you know, they've done great efforts on cleaning it up and getting things organized, you know, putting the white shed down there and cleaning up the other old building. No, I, we, we have room there to do stuff.
I think what's interesting from an ARPA discussion is, is it's kind of like we just talked about with the police car and how it has benefits and it costs and it fits in our budget. It's like, the town garage is clearly a need, and I think you have support in the board for, you know, any improved or any replacement town garage. But the question of whether it fits ARPA's kind of, does it serve everybody? Is it something that actually would be a long-term benefit? I think it's an interesting thing to compare to the other projects we're considering.
I feel like the breadth of benefit is there. Okay? I mean, we all live on the road. That we've got to have clean and maintained and open.
And we all have to pay to maintain them. We all have to pay to maintain the equipment and everything that's going to be started within the garage and around the area too, so. I mean, I think it's, it's a benefit to everybody.
Any public comment on ARPA stuff?
I think we just wrote it down a little bit.
Can I address the town garage? Just thinking, I guess, in a little bit broader, a little bit broader approach. There's enough land, enough areas to build one in right now. But you're putting a lot of money into a garage right now, it's going to be adequate for how many years? And then you have to be enlarged, potentially at some future date. Is it worth looking at expanding it not for current needs, but for future needs?
That would be great. I mean, we, I can tell you, I did some highway garage tours a while ago and see what, you know, towns that only really have a highway department and are spending, spent like $2 million on their garage. I mean, they're beautiful and it's, you know, it's probably the last garage they're ever going to need. I mean, Sean and I were trying to determine the day, we think the metal building was once like a pole barn. It was close, so, you know, some, some of those buildings are like 100 years old down there. Definitely got our money's worth back from them. But I don't know, I think there's a point where, you know, we've already got like a big grid here, where we've got, you know, we're driving, you know, the tandems now, like, we've, we've got the equipment that's about as big as it's going to get for us. But that's a good question, you know, I mean, yeah, it would be great if we could get like an industrial lot thing and go up by the B Trans garage and build a beautiful area there. Right, borrow a couple of salt from them, right? But, yeah, I mean, we still got to be realistic too, you know.
Yeah, I was just thinking, like, when you see highway construction, highways are always built for the traffic that we have now. And as soon as they're built, they're past age, they're out of date because the number of vehicles is. And as soon as they're built, they're past age, they're out of date because the number of vehicles has already increased. And rather than build a garage that is adequate for today but maybe not as well for tomorrow, it might be better to look at spending a little bit more on having something that would have a longer life utility.
I think what tends to be the case here regionally is that that change happens over a much longer period of time than in other parts of the country that experienced, you know, suburban sprawl a lot. And what we would be coming up against is that tipping point where the lifespan of the structure that we would be contemplating building might in fact be shorter than the time that it takes the need to catch up with what we're building.
I, I, I'm not saying that I don't have lots of money.
I think one thing too, like, we're not going to have any more roads. So, you know, like, we're kind of where, we know we have to maintain and, you know, we know we're trying to maintain them. So we can't make town any bigger, I don't think we can.
Drink this one.
But we do have a lot left.
Anything else on Arba? All right, I think that was helpful, we whittled it down a little bit more. I think we have three, four kind of strong candidates for more information. And that, are we told from the LCT who or when will be making the updated figures available to us?
For the second installment?
No, no, for the county money.
Oh, I don't know yet.
We haven't done that.
I don't know, we just got the email, no one I got last week, that it was, you know, all coming to us instead of the county. So, and I was kind of aware of saying, so.
Okay, all right, thank you, everybody. How about seven C, there's a request from Point Counterpoint to consider closing. She didn't really say exactly whether the whole street needs to be closed. And the chief is here, she says she talked with the chief. So we're talking about September eleventh, it's a Saturday, for a music, an outdoor music event behind the Fuller's house in the Tree Alley. So Chief Prakel, she's saying could be five PM to seven PM. And the part that she specifically asked us to look at is her number eight. This is from Jenny Beck. Sorry, Jenny Beck. Number eight, I spoke with Chief Prakel about street traffic. He said he's capable of closing the street from Fuller's property to just past Celebration Rentals for that Saturday for our event, but that the select board would be responsible for making the decision. So, and she's asking us as a select board, this is an auditory event. It would be extremely helpful if they could hear the performance without the car noise in the background.
It would be relevant to mention that this auditory event is twenty-four upright bases performing an original piece just for the sake of historical note.
Twenty-four upright bases?
Yes, it's going to be quite an event.
Is that even legal? So Chief, is that the nature of what we're talking about? Like, from Fuller's house to past Celebration Rentals is kind of like, it's the same piece of road almost? Like, would you close from the intersection to some point or?
Conceptually, that's the information that was given to me in the limited context. Yes, it would probably be from the intersection of Marble Street to just beyond Celebration Rentals. And as long as those property owners were notified so that they weren't trapped within that area. My, my only concern, and I don't have details, is that there was, I mentioned a lot of people with disabilities that were going to be there and needing guidance. So we got, we really would have to block that portion off and make sure that the residents that live within there, which would be three, three or four houses, four houses that were notified ahead of time so that they had the ability to get out of the properties for the time span if the select board was still out for that to happen.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the board on request to close the portion of Park Street from the intersection of Marble and High Street Easterly to just beyond Celebration Rentals on Saturday, September eleventh from five to seven? I'll make the motion. Mr. Coolidge, is there a second?
My second.
Second from Mr. Giles, is there a discussion or public input, public comment or discussion?
Are they contracting you guys for two hours?
No, this is just to barricade the road off and make sure that there was no traffic there, not for anybody to be posted there.
Okay, so they're going to have somebody turn and trap around coming in from Country Club Road?
That I do not know, that wasn't discussed with me.
That's going to, that's going to, that could have the potential to cause disruption.
So if, if we were to close the road from that point to that point, would there be signage placed at the Country Club Road intersection?
There could be, there could be road closed ahead or, you know, warning of that. And also certainly do a media post that there are like people, well, ahead of time that that road is going to be closed during that period.
Now you said the ones that the residents were in there, they would have to stay once they were, or they'd be able to get out during this. I take it you two.
None of the details were really given to me about the specifics of how equipment or people would be moved in there or even if participants that were going to be a part of this would gain access in and out. This was a conceptual project that was given to me for what the, what the entertainment was going to be and is it possible to close it? And my response is it's possible. The select board would have to be the body that would authorize that and we could barricade the road off. The details could not discuss with me.
So I guess my, my concern would be, you mentioned there's, there's few houses up there that have handicap needs.
Yep.
That if something was to happen to them, unless there was a project that tend to be making sure that there is a clear lane through that road for emergency vehicles. If something was to happen, any of those houses, whether it be a medical call or fire call, they would have another, call it five to seven minutes to go all the way to Rowan to get there. And being part of that emergency service for twenty-one years, that five to seven minutes is either life or death or loss of property. So unless, unless they're guaranteed to have a party attendee staff or whatnot for this event, then I'm going to bear to the know side of this on my end.
And I, I would also agree with mine. I think we need to have a little more, I'm off for closing it down for the event, but I think we need to have more detail on.
Does, does anybody know if the road is being closed specifically to park vehicles or they're parking them off the street? And I suppose the supplement on that, I want to close it for noise reasons.
I guess they don't know.
The quality here that some way terminals is allowing parking on their space, so I don't think it's for parking. I think it's to allow free access across the road for their handicap people that are, I mean, they're partnering with the visually, the blind and visually impaired. And so I think the anticipation is they want to be able to have people be able to cross freely without worrying about traffic.
So you're saying two hundred, minimum two hundred people, so.
But I think what we haven't talked about is, her number three says that their plan is for attendees to meet downtown at the park in front of the Brandon Inn, have an informal historic tour along Park Street to the Fuller property. So I think she's envisioning most of her concert attendees walking there. And that maybe the musicians are going to park across the street because a double bass, it's not a flute. And walk the instrument, right? I mean, we could easily say that it's conditional on you having someone stationed at the intersection of Park Street and Marble Street to man a sawhorse or whatever it is and open that if there's a police car or a fire engine or an ambulance that needs to come. And the same thing at the other end. And maybe we could say, you've got to have someone at Country Club Roads, tell the people what's going on and that they probably don't want to go down. Or we could develop the idea a little further with Jenny Beck between now and the next meeting and make a decision then.
I would say that we have time to do it.
Have some time, yeah.
We got some time to do it, so I think I would rather than have her give us a little more.
Could you guys, just a suggestion, make sure that there's, it's off-street parking, that vehicles aren't blocking the road?
Right. So could I ask you and the chief and whoever else you designate to tell Jenny that the board's inclined to facilitate this, subject to some conditions that we've just covered? And see if we can get that kind of firmed up with her before the next select board meeting? Is that a consensus?
I think that sounds very good.
Okay. Any public comment about Park Street closure for a couple hours? Okay, item seven C, also Park Street, Park Street, High Street, Marble Street intersection, Neil?
It's my first time presenting this.
Yes, tell us.
That I've presented before. And I don't have any hard data, but the rumor mill of residents around the intersection is that there's a lot of accidents, which I don't have statistics for, and a lot of close calls evidenced by warrants and reaching rates. And that that would be relieved if we had a four-way stop instead of a three-way stop. If the traffic coming, a cell phone on seventy-three is guaranteeing free access wherever they want to go and it's confusing to me.
So I'm going to ask Dave to speak about this. I will say that the most recent time when I was on the board, when this came up, that the solution that we came up with at that time was to put the signs that said, "Traffic from the left doesn't stop traffic, oncoming doesn't stop traffic," you know what I mean? There's three signs at the stop signs that tell you, you're stopped, but the guy across is not. Or you're stopped, but the guy on the right is not going to stop. And I believe we made that decision, and this is where I'm going to ask Dave to verify it. I believe we made that decision based on a V-Trans traffic study that said that a four-way stop was not appropriate or was not warranted or something of that nature. And they basically told us, don't do it.
Because it's a class one and I believe that we did some studies to see how many accidents were there and it really wasn't anything abnormal, if I remember correctly. We definitely have more on Route seventy, on our high school than we do there. More, I mean, there's always close calls, but we could probably pick any intersection in town and do that. But, yeah, I mean, because we were trying to fight for a four-way stop in a crosswalk even when we started doing the Park Street project and.
Well, before that, Terry Klein was coming, Terry Klein came, and that was a number of years ago because they haven't lived in town for about five or six years.
Right. We can put the traffic light back up.
The chief has that traffic light cornered, yes?
If I remember correctly, there were a bunch of bushes on that corner property of High Street and Park.
There was.
So you couldn't see the traffic coming down seventy-three.
Not High Street, Marble Street, right? Wasn't it on the construction of Park Street?
On Marble Street, yes.
Yeah.
And those bushes aren't there now, so you have a pretty good.
I think it's improved from what it was. I agree. But my recollection was it kind of wasn't our decision to make, like.
I shouldn't call V-Trans again, so that's the problem because it's a, it's a class one and we get state funding for maintaining those roads.
And have, I believe there was some sentiment among the people who lived there, either in the house at the time or a nearby house on the Marble Street side, that they did not want to have a stop sign there because there would be a lot of stopping and starting noise close to their house. Was that, did that not come up?
I don't remember that and what caused it. It's kind of a suspect.
So my, my thinking here, if we have a state department to have the cell phone traffic with no stoplight or stop sign, why is there a stop sign to the north of it?
Because they're crossing the lanes. This is why we put the two crosswalks in like two-thirds down the east side of Park Street when we did the project. So, I can ask again, I, I think we're going to end up the same road, but.
It, it could be. My, my observation is that the cell phone traffic on seventy-three, I saw a semi the other day, kind of not get quite down to forty-five before the stop or before the turn. And for me, the issue is more speaking traffic that kind of is barely under control it seems than whether they stop or not. You know, it'd be nice if this was down enough to see somebody in the road. Sorry?
The speed limit there is twenty-five?
Yes.
Right?
I, I don't know how often is actually observed, but I would say not very.
Could we get the speed car over there once in a while? Perhaps? Has it been there recently?
We did, just a few weeks ago we had that there.
I'd say it was out there, I'd say it was down there, it was over there.
It's probably the most discussed intersection in this town.
Yeah.
There is very limited data on traffic accidents in that, at that intersection. Are there some close calls? I'm sure that there are some that don't ever get reported, some that I've seen and been involved in myself. But the majority of the people that you will find that aren't familiar with that intersection who are not from around here might be confused when they first get there. But I do believe that those additional signage on the bottom of those stop signs do pop out because everyone sees a stop sign and they see something attached to it different, they pay attention to it. It's a different color, so they're pretty well-marked stop signs to alert people to other oncoming traffic. And, yeah, we, we sat on High Street farther down gauging the speed of vehicles that are coming down Marble Street before they get to the intersection when they're in the twenty-five zone. We put the speed car out there. I'm sure that you've noticed a lot more if you live right there, absolutely. But the reality is that for the amount of people that drive through that intersection, it's a very safe intersection.
But I noticed we're here on the place this last week, go ahead. I hadn't seen any out here with the stop signs. They were all aligned with the, on the silver and there were, there was a blinking light, a blinking, or just a red light all the way around the, all the way around the stop sign. Those were, and they just, with us not being in the area, not being from the area, I mean, we definitely caught the, we definitely caught the stop sign, the light, because the light was the same shape. It went right around the outside of the stop sign, so that was a neat, I mean, your feature. And we've all solar powered.
Other comment? Dave's going to contact V-Trans, see what, see what the board does. So a couple of warrants for bills, is a previous fiscal year bill still? Are you winding down the previous fiscal year bills?
Let's find the last one.
Let's find the last one. What's the pleasure of the board on the two warrants?
Make motion to approve both.
Second, motion for Mr. Wyman and a second for Mr. Coolidge. Are there any questions on any of the invoices? Oh, that's what it was. I saw the invoice for a website redesign. Is that us, is it rep or what?
It's us, we've been, we've been discussing it for a while, so.
So is this like the initial status still? Very cool.
Bill and I were just talking about this, and last week.
Boy, that's good.
I know, just get the finances. Because I was kind of looking at maybe doing something with the assessors on our website too for blister card accessibility and stuff, Karen and I were talking about it, so we figured if we're doing this, we. Website upgrade, and I might be the perfect time to add this in with it at the same time so, you know, realtors and title searchers and folks can access this information.
Speaking of that, and it's not directly related to a warrant, but I hope you'll allow it.
Sure, just this once.
If, if we're printing the tax maps again or publishing the tax maps soon, can you have them not draw little boxes around all the lot line dimensions?
Very hard to read.
So like, if your lot is like this and it says ninety on this side and one hundred and ten on this side, the previous versions of the map just had the numbers. This version of the map has a little square box drawn around each of those numbers and is, it's very, very hard to read.
So the company bought our old company, one of those, was probably similar somewhere in the office or something. It's a different company now, so, I mean, I guess I can suggest it to them, but they're probably going to tell me not to worry.
Go back to the company.
They're almost unusable.
They're company, I don't, you can't.
Go, go ahead and I.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Well, I just realized that there was a piece on computers that you just triggered when you said you were working on the website. The LCT sent me, and I'm assuming everybody.
BLCT sent me, and I'm assuming everybody in the board, this thing about passive cyber survey. Have you ever done one of those? Because it has to do with cybersecurity and how secure we are and it has to do with our insurance rates, I think.
I'm sure the passives probably didn't send it to me because I'm one of the board directors for tax things. So they're probably doing a survey, I don't know if you get it.
Well, it's funny because it's, I actually wrote to Seth saying, have you ever filled out one of these? And I know I haven't. We got no response because it felt spam. It says, "As a preference and severity of cyber related attacks in case of increase, each member must have a highest level of security protection in place. Completing this survey, your organization's unique link is emailed to primary passive contacts on July 30th. Will help us make current decisions for 2022." And I know I didn't get that unique link. And I'm wondering if you did because you're...
Maybe Jack or Sue got it. I don't think I got it.
Could you look into that for me, just so I know? Because I think you've heard me say before that I'm interested in making sure we have good cybersecurity branded. And I would just love to know if we filled out that survey and the results of it. And I hope you take that as a friendly, I'm not being critical here. I just wanted to follow up.
Yep.
Thanks. Other questions on the warrants? If not ready to vote, all in favor of the two warrants as they were printed, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And of course, say no. But it's out of item nine. Motion for adjournment, Mr. Coolidge. The second? Second for Mr. Wyman, not debatable. All in favor of adjourned? The select board meeting, any questions, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?